Good evening, everyone. This February 5th, 2015, Regular Meeting Number 13 of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Oakton Elementary and High School Orchestra under the direction of Max Oppenheimer and Mary Beth Frank. That was absolutely beautiful. I would like to hear a few more selections of other pieces of music. If we had the time, I would love that, but thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you again, and I want to recognize, I know Christine Gray, Mrs. Christine Gray, the Principal of Oakton Elementary School, is here. And I don't know if Dr. John Banbury is here, but I also want to thank all the parents who brought your children out for us to not to enjoy their wonderful talent, so thank you very much.
Patty, Ms. Reed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just quickly, you know, I think this is the first time that we've ever had a combined high school and elementary school performance. How wonderful. It just was a beautiful performance, and we're just so proud of all of you, and your parents, I'm sure, are just as proud, and this is just a fine example of the fine arts at Fairfax County Public Schools. Kudos.
Moving on to our second agenda item, certification of our closed meeting. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on February 5th, 2015, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from opening meeting requirements, and only such public business matters were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. The foregoing shall be deemed to include the certification of each School Board member who served on a student disciplinary committee, that those closed committee meetings are lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Section 2.2-3711A2 of the Code of Virginia, and that only such student disciplinary matters were heard, discussed, or considered in those closed committee meetings. Is there a motion? My Ms. Strauss? Seconded by Mr. McAvine? All those in favor? The vote is unanimous. And a few announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. If you may access tonight's meeting agenda and related meeting documents by going to the FCPS website and selecting School Board, and then Upcoming Meetings and Agendas. The meeting is also being streamed live on the FCPS website homepage. Click on Watch School Board Live. Please turn off or silence your cell phones. And next, I will ask Dr. Garza for special recognition.
You can see that did not go according to script, or according to what I thought my script was going to be, but thank you, Madam Chairman, for the opportunity to make just a brief announcement. First of all, I'm pleased to announce to the public that February is School Board Appreciation Month. So tonight, we celebrate the service, the dedication, and the just significant contributions of our school board, and each of the 12 individuals who comprise this board. I like the following Chinese proverb: "If you're planning for a year, sow rice; if you're planning for a decade, plant trees; if you're planning for a lifetime, educate young people." This board, along with the wonderful FCPS staff and faculty, we are planning for a lifetime. We are investing in the preparation of our young people today so that they are prepared for success in life. The education of Virginia's school-aged children is the foundation upon which the economic, social, and intellectual capital of our state is built and sustained. Locally-elected school boards play an instrumental role in our communities, for they are charged with the governance of our precious public school systems. Together with the superintendent, they create a vision for our schools and likewise create the conditions necessary to accomplish this very important mission. Great boards are created by assembling visionary, dedicated, and collaborative leaders, individuals who collectively have the intellect and courage to move together towards that vision. It's a pleasure to work with this outstanding group of leaders. They are all very passionate about our mission, preparing every child for success. Most importantly, they are fervent champions for our children. Our school board members are very dedicated, and as such, they each commit significant time to their important role in caring for our great school system. They're very engaged in the community, they attend many, many countless meetings, and they read volumes of information to be prepared for making these important decisions they are charged to make. Serving as a school board member requires a tremendous commitment of time, time that is often taken away from their families and loved ones, so I believe it is very appropriate for us to also acknowledge and thank the families of our school board members. Our young people and our public schools are a community's most precious resource, so the stewardship of our great schools is very, very important. We are thankful to this board for their leadership and service. Today, we celebrate you. We have a certificate for you, and we have a small token of our appreciation there at your place, and I think some of you already opened it. So I ask everyone here with me tonight to please join me in thanking our school board members, each and every one of you, for your vast and important contributions. Thank you.
I think we're going to take a picture right now, right? Yes, we're going to take a picture.
And we're going to take a picture. Yay!
And, yes, yay, us. Us, us with us. Oh, there are no voice casts, that's why.
No, and that's what happened.
And they add to the thing. Okay.
Patty. Only go in the order in which, step.
Go in the order in which I said.
I'm over here.
Danielle.
There you go, Kathy.
She's got.
Thank you.
There you go.
That's what we were debating back then. Obviously, we didn't do.
It wasn't the script. And they told someone it was the script.
It's supposed to be a surprise.
Thank you so much, Dr. Garza and staff, for that. We really do appreciate it, and I also appreciate working with all of you, so thank you. Next on our agenda is another recognition, and this is recognition of Custodian Appreciation Week, and I call him Ms. Evans.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. It's a great honor to acknowledge our incredibly hard-working and very important custodial employees, and I see several here tonight. I'm so glad you could join us tonight. Our custodians serve such a critical role in our schools and our buildings, and to make sure that we have smooth operation of our schools, as well as for the health and safety of our students, so we want to thank you very much this evening. Custodian Appreciation Week is February 23rd to 27th, 2015. The school board recognizes the hard work and unending dedication of the custodians who work for Fairfax County Public Schools. Our custodians are the first employees to arrive in the morning and the last employees to leave at night. By providing clean and safe school environments, the custodians at FCPS have a direct impact on the educational success of our students. Many custodians take additional training, leading to certification as professional custodians. The week of February 23rd to 27th has been named Custodian Appreciation Week to recognize and thank our dedicated custodians whose attention to detail and high standards affect all students, employees, and many members of the community. In addition, each work site for Fairfax County Public Schools also acknowledges their great support for staff during Support Employee Appreciation Week, which is April 20th to 25th, 2015. Thank you so much, and if you would, if you're here tonight, would you please come down and get a picture with all of us? We want to thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I know you're here a lot. Thank you. Appreciate all your work.
Our next order of business is citizen participation. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes and provide at least 16 copies of their presentation for distribution to the Board. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries, or personal attacks on any person. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. If the concern is a group concern, please consider appointing a spokesperson, and while the spokesperson is speaking, those in support may stand to show their support. Tonight, two citizens have signed up to address the Board. They are Stephen Greenberg and Kimberly Adams. Mr. Greenberg.
School Board Appreciation Week, huh? Dr. Garza, Chairman Darnett Kofax, esteemed school board members, renowned Mr. Latif, my name is Steve Greenberg. I represent members of the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers, Educators that Care. I'll be here tonight to speak on 5.04 Early Head Start, et cetera, but I'm here to talk about some other stuff, too. FCFT would like to thank this entire school board, and specifically Ms. Darnett Kofax and Ms. Hines, for their continued attention, focus, and advocacy for our youngest students in relation to all of the programs and committees we utilize to support our young learners and families. When you ran for school board over three years ago, you both promised that you would remain true to that priority, and all of you up here had priorities, different ones, and you have followed through and done your best on all of them despite continued underfunding by our county and state leaders. I want you to know that's recognized and appreciated. You've continued to engage and problem-solve, doing your best with what little you've been given. This current school board's competence in dealing with incredibly challenging issues despite proper support from its county partners is why I'm here tonight. We need a school board like this one, not just now, but in the future. As you've been spending weeks considering a potential school board salary increase, engaging your community, teachers, students, and I hope to hear more from you on this soon, Mr. Latif, and each other thoughtfully, so is FCFT. We appreciate that you took the time with this and that you made sure this issue was not confused or mixed in with the FCPS advertised budget, which must be fully funded for our students. The fact that you did not just shove it through without consensus displays why you are such a considerate and competent board, you knew not to distract us from our focus, our students. FCFT now feels it is appropriate to begin making public comment on this issue and that of our county supervisors' potential salary increase, and I beg of you to send them a link of this speech. The Fairfax County Board of Supervisors should demand your salary increase and pay for it without hurting children unless they are hypocrites, again. The supervisors need to fully fund the budget to provide for our students' needs and provide funding for your salary increase. If they can't find money for that anywhere else, they should take it out of their own salaries. You would think that our county supervisors might better respect what you've done as a school board, considering how little they've accomplished or helped you. Auditing reforms, discipline forms, full-day Mondays for parents and kids, later high school start times for student health. Dr. Garza, and balancing a budget annually without the proper funding, an amazing job. The same county politicians who are now asking the community to fund a pay raise for them should be demanding yours instead unless they're really bad managers of the taxpayer money. Again, you are the fiscal stewards of over half the Fairfax County budget, billions of dollars, but you shouldn't be paid even a third of what our county supervisors are. In what corporate model do you encourage putting underqualified or undercompensated individuals in critical positions in charge of the majority of your financial resources? Where are your priorities, supervisors? What kind of leaders are you? You want another raise, but you devalue the people who are keeping you from collapsing? No wonder our county is in such bad shape. Once again, FCFT publicly calls on the Fairfax County Supervisors to fully fund the salary increase of this school board, whatever it ends up determining is needed to maintain the quality of it, in addition to the full funding of the FCPS advertised budget. I promise I will come up here and talk about homework and the wonderful support of our PTA the next time, but I want to make this a priority since it is School Board Appreciation Week. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Mr. Greenberg. Ms. Adams.
Good evening, Chairman Darnett Kofax, members of the school board, and Dr. Garza. My name is Kimberly Adams, and I do speak on behalf of the Fairfax Education Association, representing not only teachers but education support professionals. It is always a pleasure to join with the school board and honor employees who work so hard for the benefit of Fairfax County students. As Dr. Garza said, we do thank each of you for your service to the school system as elected leaders in our community who work very hard for our students as well. This week, we celebrate National School Counseling Week. We recognize our school counselors. FCPS counselors are the employees who help our students deal with some of the most challenging moments in their young lives, whether it's navigating social situations and diffusing conflict, or dealing with very adult subjects like death, and poverty, and family strife. Our school counselors are there to guide our students. They deserve our support and thanks because almost every time they pick up the phone, a challenge is at the other end. Our schools are better places for students and teachers because of the dedicated counselors in Fairfax County. February is also National Career and Technical Education Month, so I honor my CTE colleagues. If any of you want to understand what commitment means, you should shadow a CTE teacher. There are plenty of students in FCPS who pursue life paths that may not include college. Our CTE colleagues are there to make sure that our graduates have a bright future in whatever field they choose. We need people to do all kinds of jobs in our society, and we applaud our colleagues who prepare our talented young people for the workforce. We specifically thank, as in years past, the Culinary Arts Program in Fairfax County because we use their catering services for all of our events. Custodian Appreciation Week will be recognized February 23rd through 27th, and we will honor all of our custodial staff. These dedicated workers are the men and women who are still there when everyone has gone home for the evening, cleaning floors, sanitizing restrooms, setting up for all meetings, mowing the lawns, keeping our schools hazard-free for students and employees, and doing it all with more square footage per custodian. They are the ones opening the buildings early in the morning and making sure our schools are safe. I have two children myself, and they make it a challenge to keep my own home clean, and I know that with 180,000 students plus, our custodial staff is able to keep our schools in great condition. Our custodians are always on the job, and for that, we thank them. As we continue along in this year's budget season, remember how vitally important all of our employees are in keeping FCPS the world-class school system that it is. I thank you again for your work.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Our next agenda item is Student Representative Matters, and I call on Mr. Latif.
Thank you. Chairman Darnett Kofax, Dr. Garza, members of the school board. Instead of talking about a school visit or a meeting of the Student Advisory Council tonight, I'd like to highlight a public health issue that is affecting the lives and well-being of students across our county. The Centers for Disease Control, the National Institutes of Health, and the World Health Organization haven't invested a single cent into research or on educating the public about its risks. This condition can affect a student's ability to think clearly, perform well in class, and interact well with his peers, his or her peers. That's right. As you may have already guessed, I'm describing the dreaded seasonal epidemic that is called senioritis. All 12,000 high school seniors currently in our system are at risk. I've been vaccinated, others have not. However, I have a few suggestions on potential remedies this board could prescribe. For students applying to a college with a November or January deadline, after the first semester has concluded, scores going into the gradebook will only be reported to colleges well after that student has received an admissions decision. Naturally, if grades dramatically worsen, a positive decision may turn into a negative one. There are exceptions to this statement, but that's generally the situation a majority of students find themselves in. Consequently, many seniors take it upon themselves to miss classes, let their grades slide a bit, and otherwise lose interest in coming to school after the first semester concludes, which is right about now. My proposed solution, which might help solve a small portion of this seasonal problem, is to expand a program that is already in place at my home school of Langley. Seniors are given the opportunity to participate in a program called Langley Leap. From the last week of May through the first week of June, Langley seniors participate in internships with organizations which include hospitals and medical centers, other FCPS schools, political campaigns, homeless shelters, and even congressional offices on Capitol Hill. Of course, there are some prerequisites a student must have in order to participate. You have to have a minimum GPA, fewer than three excused absences. If you get non-excused absences, you are out of luck, and students have to complete a report to be presented to his or her classmates and teachers upon the completion of the internship. According to Mr. Kevin Howard, a senior English teacher at Langley who founded the program four years ago, the Langley Leap is seen as a capstone event for seniors, and this year, he expects nearly 70% of my senior class to take advantage of the opportunity. He's also consistently received positive feedback from students, parents, and community members alike. So why not expand this program or something similar to this countywide? Mr. Howard tells me that Westfield and Herndon have either started similar programs or in the process of doing so, and with the population of over 12,000 seniors in high and secondary schools across Fairfax, imagine the number of local community organizations that could benefit from having extra help, and imagine the invaluable hands-on learning experiences we could provide our students who are about to enter college or the workforce. Now moving on to another matter, the upcoming Second Annual Community Conversation on Teen Stress, which is set for Saturday, May the 9th, at Hayfield. A wide variety of sessions for students, parents, community members, and educators are needed, which focus on the topics of mental health, resiliency, stress balance, and wellness, all priorities for students. And students, parents, educators, and community practitioners are all encouraged to submit ideas so they can present it at the conference. And this year's keynote speaker will be Dr. Mark Brackett. He's a psychologist, an author, and the director of the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence, so I'm very much looking forward to that. And for more information, you can go to fcpse.edu and search "Community Conversation on Teen Stress." This afternoon, I had the pleasure of meeting with Dr. Garza, along with the President of the SAC, Michael Morrow, and my student representative to the School Health Advisory Committee, Ben Press. We had a great discussion on topics ranging from the future of the SAC to homework load. Thank you, Dr. Garza. It is always great when you remind us how much you care about student opinion. We really do appreciate that. I'd like to thank the students from several leadership classes who have reached out to me over the last two weeks, agreeing with the statement that the fervor over snow days does in fact have everything to do with workload. And looking ahead, I am very happy to be attending the winter graduation at Bryant High School next Wednesday, the 11th. The day after that, on Thursday, we'll be having the election convention for the next student representative. I learned this morning, there will be 10 candidates from each corner of the county. I had to reschedule my first visit to Fairfax High School due to a family emergency, so I'll be going on Friday, February 13th. I'm not very superstitious, so I hope that will go well. And lastly, I was sorry to miss the public hearing on the FY 2016 advertised budget last Thursday, but I DVR'd it, and I watched it on Saturday afternoon, and now you know how I spend my weekends. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Latif. I do appreciate that. As the mother of someone who had severe senioritis two years ago, I did bring it to form, and I may bring it back again. I applaud the leadership at Langley, the administration, for doing the Langley Leap, is that what you called it? I appreciate that, so thank you so much. Next on our item, our agenda, is the advertised budget. Next on our item, our agenda, is the advertised budget. So I call on Ms. Reed to make the motion.
Thank you, Chairman Darnatt-Kofax. I move to adopt the FY 2016 advertised budget as detailed in the superintendent's proposed budget and as detailed in the agenda item.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Smith. Would you like to speak on your topic?
Absolutely. Get myself pulled together here, apologize. Okay. I believe this is a reasonable budget. It reflects a new approach. We have spent months and months of meeting and talking with school board members, with community members, with stakeholders, with supervisors, to try to really understand people's priorities and expectations. This is not a Washington Monument document. This budget must be fully funded. There is no wiggle room in this budget. This does reflect the Board of Supervisors' guidance, and this is a new approach, as I suggested. We're hoping that it'll be received as such. This budget reflects major cost drivers and board priorities, and I will read them quickly so we all can make sure that we understand what's in this. There's a lot of information, and sometimes I think people lose sight of things. So, okay, what's important? What's a cost driver? What is this budget addressing? Enrollment in demographics, 18.6 million. It addresses projected growth of over 1,300 students, along with significant changes in student demographics. It is important to note that we are receiving increasing numbers of students that require a greater level of English speakers of other languages services, particularly at the high school level, and that demand has increased for free or reduced-price meals. Salary increases of 59.4 million, which include a step increase per eligible employees and a 1% market scale adjustment for all employees. Employee compensation is the board's highest priority. Full-day Mondays at 4.9 million. This provides additional elementary teacher planning time and a full day of instruction on Mondays for elementary students. Implementation of later high school start times, 4.9 million, needed for the purchase of 27 buses and to fund drivers, recruitment training, fuel, and service costs. And then targeted elementary school class size relief at 3.1 million, and this is a placeholder to alleviate large class sizes. And at our budget work session, we talked at length about some of the proposed regulatory changes there. This budget also does include reductions of over 55 million achieved through compensation-based savings resulting from turnover, which has been an issue with the Board of Supervisors, lower health insurance costs, and reductions to centrally managed accounts, including fuel, utilities, benefits, and savings produced by the reorganization. We cannot continue the practice of balancing each year's budget on reductions. It is not sustainable and will erode the quality of our school system. Our model is not sustainable. It is important that we work with the Board of Supervisors on multi-year budgeting so that we can work together to understand the funds available for the county and what services can be provided. We also need to look forward to 2017, where we're projecting over $100 million shortfall. But again, the focus tonight is on the FY 2016 budget. I would like to thank Dr. Garza, the budget team, and Mrs. Smith, and I urge my colleagues to support this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Thank you. I hope my colleagues support this budget. The main piece is the employee compensation. That this has been a priority of the board to increase employee compensation, and this budget contains $59.4 million to do that, for a step for those eligible employees, and a 1% market scale adjustment. As Mrs. Reed said, this budget does have $55.4 million in reductions, and that helps us. She named where that money's coming from, but you have to talk about where else we've been. So the current year's budget we're in right now, we cut $97.8 million in 723 positions. So since fiscal year 2008, we have cut $435 million and more than 2,175 positions. So if you take that 435 and you look at the $55 million we're looking to cut in this budget, you're talking about half, almost half a billion dollars in cuts as we're growing by at least 2,000 students a year. We've had to make changes in increasing class size, and we know we don't have the revenue to fix some of those things yet. But in this budget, there's money to deal with large class sizes in the elementary school. So we know there's many things we want to do, but this is a very reasonable budget. And I want to repeat about the transfer request. We talk about the budget. Really, we don't talk about it in terms of how much it's going up altogether. We talk about the transfer requests we get from the supervisors, because we get a little over 70% of the budget from them. So the transfer request we're looking for is at 3.99%, and that is only $14 million over the guidance they provided us that's less than 1%. It's 0.79%. We need the community to help us advocate for full funding for this budget. And I know year after year, we need you to get involved, but this budget is so tight with the cuts we've made and our priority of employee compensation that we don't want to have to cut any of those pieces. So the county executive will come out with his budget February 17th. And then the important date is March 3, where the Board of Supervisors will set the advertised tax rate. Every penny they raise the tax rate is in a $20 million mark. And if they don't set it high enough for us to have a real discussion about the revenue we need, we know that we'll be in trouble with our budget. So I urge the community to get involved in that discussion, to get knowledgeable, and to help support our schools. Our schools are the backbone of this community. And our teachers work hard, and they will make things work. I was talking with some people, and I said, "It's our strength, and it's our Achilles' heel, how our employees, no matter if we cut positions in what we do, they work hard and do the best for our children." But we truly are at a tipping point that we need to get this budget fully funded. So I know all of my colleagues, we're going to work with the community to get to that point. Thank you.
Ms. Strauss, followed by Ms. Evans.
The quality of instruction for our children every day depends on the quality of the people who are in our classrooms and in our buildings. Education is a labor-intensive, labor-of-love, and will always be that. With improvements in science research and MRIs and all the rest of it, it is now proven something that we who have been in the classroom have known all along. Children learn, their brains expand, their ability to be all that they can be is dependent on their interaction with other people. All of the wonderful other things that we can put into classrooms, whether it's technology, resources, et cetera, are for naught unless we have good teachers. When we began to give in all of our high schools the PISA exam, the one interesting thing that we learned is that it's the relationship between our teachers and our children, our children and our teachers, that actually counts the most. So we can not not give pay increases. We have balanced these budgets too many times on the back of our own employees. It takes five years for most teachers to get their feet under them. We invest, and we help, and we support, and then we need to keep them in those classrooms. It takes a long time to develop those relationships. You cannot remain a teacher if you can't pay your bills, if you can't support your own families, your own children, pay your own rent. You cannot expect quality unless you pay them. And we are behind, we are sinking to a very uncompetitive spot. It is critical that we pay our teachers what they need. And this is simply a down payment because we are so far behind. The other important pieces that the community has talked about that this budget finally addresses, later high school start times, full-day Mondays, beginning to address the larger class sizes. This is an important budget, it is a very tight budget. And again, when we talk about, we have cut almost a half a billion dollars on a $2.5 billion budget. That is a lot of money and a lot of positions. So I absolutely support this. I agree with Ms. Reed and Ms. Smith that we need to get our community to help us support this. We need to get the Board of Supervisors to support it. This is tight. But most importantly, to keep the quality of our teachers and our staff in our schools, we must support this budget. Thank you.
Ms. Evans.
First of all, I want to thank all of the people who were involved in working on this budget. It took a lot of work to get to where we are. I know the public may have not seen all of the work that went behind what they're seeing today, but it took a tremendous amount of effort from our chair and vice chair, as well as Dr. Garza and her staff, and members of the board as well, for putting their thoughtfulness into this. This is a balanced and well-thought-out budget. It's very reasonable. It's a plan that matches the priorities of this board. We have made pay increases for our teachers and other employees our top priority, and this budget recognizes that. It also pays for full-day Mondays and for later high school start times, both of great benefit for our students. At the same time, it starts to address the class size issue. Our school system actually needs more than is in this budget. If we could, we would ask for more, but we are doing our level best to fulfill the guidelines that the Board of Supervisors has given us, even after years and years of what I consider bare-bones funding. We continue to struggle just to meet the fact that we have increasing numbers of students, higher percentages of needier students, and the largely unseen but very real cost of pensions. That's something that the state has imposed on us, and we have to continue to pay that. That's an uncontrollable cost for us. It's something that the public doesn't see, but it's something that we must deal with. We're in the middle of a closing vice here of increased costs and tighter revenues on the other side. But we've done our part. We've done our part, and we have kept this spending as close to the bone as we can. So now our funders have to do their part. If we are going to keep our school system as a model school system, we absolutely have to have this fully funded. So I will agree with what other speakers have said, that I hope our community comes out. I hope our community supports us on this, because it is absolutely critical that this budget be fully funded.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Others? Ms. McLaughlin?
For those who didn't watch or didn't have the opportunity to see our work session last week, I do want to just reiterate a few things that I shared with Dr. Garza and our colleagues. And that is how pleased I am to be voting in support tonight of this proposed budget. As noted by my colleague Ms. Reed and others, our superintendent took very carefully the guidance that we received from the county executive and the Board of Supervisors. And she and her team, her leadership team, worked tirelessly to try and identify how we could come as close to possible to the 3% projected transfer funding to the school system for this next year. And to come in at 3.99% when, as Ms. Evans pointed out, we have all of these uncontrolled costs with additional students coming in, and as Ms. Reed pointed, additional students that have greater need. Those are things that we have to do in order to ensure that Fairfax County remains one of the best public school systems here in the United States. I also want to make sure that our employees understand that myself, and I've heard my colleagues speak to this as well as Dr. Garza, there needs to be equity in compensation for every single employee in this county, whether you work for the Board of Supervisors and the county government, or whether you work for our public school system. You serve the citizens of Fairfax County. And this budget that we are proposing and presenting to the Board of Supervisors reflects that. It reflects our desire to have that equity in pay compensation. And that is something I'm going to continue to speak probably most passionately between now and when the Board of Supervisors make their decision about how much to fund us. But that's the fair, and it's the right thing to do. And so I do hope that we will be very fortunate as a school system, and more importantly, fortunate as a county, that the Board of Supervisors will make the right decision, and they will fully fund this budget request that we're going to be voting on here tonight. I also want to say, as the daughter of a public school teacher, that I also take very seriously the fact that we know as a school system that we absolutely must work toward the salaries of our teachers and to make them more competitive in the marketplace here in the region. And I look forward to working with our superintendent and with this school board to identify a plan. How can we look to close that gap? We talk about other gaps in our responsibilities as a school board, but we do have a responsibility with the pay gap for our teachers. And I do believe it's time, as this region moves out of the recession, that we need to identify what that plan will look like. I think that will help our teachers especially understand that if there is a strategic plan in place, how do we move forward in that? Even if it takes us time, at least they know that the effort and the initiative is starting there. Again, I want to say to Dr. Garza, thank you for bringing this to our board, for giving us an opportunity to demonstrate that this school system, that this board is committed to collaborating with our Board of Supervisors, that we understand the pressures that they have with the fiscal constraints. But when you look at a budget that for this coming year will only be 2.6% over last year's spending, that does represent our greatest commitment to try and work with the funds that are available. And I implore our county citizens, most of us have moved here at some point in time because we knew that there were great schools in this system. And whether or not you have children in the public schools, you know that your home values are greatly tied to an incredible school system. So please, write, contact, speak with your Board of Supervisors, emphasize to them that public schools remain a high priority for you as a citizen, and to fully fund our proposed budget that we'll be voting on here tonight.
Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What I wanted to say has been already said by Mrs. McLaughlin, but I just wanted to clarify the distinction between a transfer increase request of a 3.99% versus budget increase over this year's approved budget, which is 2.6%. Our expenditure is only going to increase by 2.6%. It's not 3.99% because there is a reduction in other sources of revenue. Revenue, we are asking a little more from county side, but our entire expenditure increase is only 2.6%.
Ms. Heinz.
Thank you. If anybody's sort of tuning in for the first time tonight about the budget, just thought, just would reassure you that actually we've talked about this quite a bit. And what you're hearing tonight is, you know, sort of a pitch, you know, from a lot of us, because we know that this is the best budget that we could put forward at this time, and we know how important it is that everybody let the Board of Supervisors know, and they are our major funder, how important it is. And so if you're interested in any of our previous deliberations, just go to the FCPS website, click on "School Board", look through our board meetings, information about our meetings, and you'll find work sessions. And we had a public hearing recently, so there's a lot of information. Also, on the very front page of our website, you can click on "Budget", and it will get you all kinds of documents about it. I would just say, I'll put my own pitch in, you know, the new normal, which we feel like we've been in for the last eight years is just not sustainable, it's not acceptable. This idea that we don't have what we need in this county to have great schools is not acceptable. And this board and this superintendent are intent on advocating for our schools as strongly as we can. The trouble with the tipping point, you know, and we feel like we're hitting tipping points now in this school system, is that you don't know you've hit it until you're past it, and then it will cost you more to recover than it would have cost you to maintain. Not only that, we want to be able to innovate, and it is so hard to do that in this climate. So there are just so many reasons why this great school system needs to be treated like a great school system when it comes to funding time. I would just say a couple of things. We are now spending, if I'm correct, $1,000 less per child in real dollars than we were six years ago. $1,000 less per child in real dollars than we were six years ago at a time of incredible growth and increasing costs, and costs that we have no control over. So I think this budget hit compensation and class size. I was going to have a hard time supporting this budget if we didn't make some real strides and real commitments on class size, but we have done that, and I really appreciate that. I appreciate so much, Dr.
I appreciate so much, Dr. Garza and staff, the work that you all have done to bring this to us. So just my own plea, final pitch, is if you are interested in our great school system for whatever reason, whether you have kids in the system, or you just know how important it is to this economy and this community, please contact your Board of Supervisors. Well, contact your School Board member to find out more if you need to. But we do need for the Board of Supervisors, who, you know, they fund roughly 72% of our budget every year, so they take a great responsibility here, and we know that. But they need to hear from us, that they, we really, we want them to fully fund our budget request. The two dates, and I'll just reiterate, Mrs. Smith mentioned March 3rd. That is the day that the County Board of Supervisors sets the maximum amount by which they can raise the tax rate. That really is the day. If they don't hear from you before then, their hands are tied in terms of how much extra revenue they will have coming in. They don't have a public hearing until April 7th, I believe. So the most important decision they make on this happens a month before their public hearing. So people need to know that, and they need to make sure that they email and call their supervisor and copy the entire Board of Supervisors every time you talk to any one of them. So, again, we are obviously passionate about this. We are your advocates for the school system, and we want to hear from you if you have any questions or any ideas for us about how to do that.
Ms. Schultz.
This is going to be a fun juxtaposition, and it's going to be interesting that the message comes out the same from my colleague Ms. Hines and from me. I don't think I make any bones about it. I'm the most fiscally conservative person on this School Board. That's not a surprise. But, you know, I've had some very interesting meetings just this week, including last evening, with the West Springfield Civic Association. And this needs to be heard loud and clear for kind of the general public, for our supervisors, for our stakeholders, remembering that 75% of the residents in Fairfax County do not have children in the public schools. When a parent of elementary and middle school students asked me last night, "Do I need to move?", that in a nutshell wraps up where we are. We have a pressing and increasing student population, which we do not control. We have capital projects and land use issues that we do not control. And the students who come must be educated. The tremendous amount of stewardship that comes with this role on the School Board is something that I think that a vast majority of the public do not understand. Yet, in turn, those 75% who do not have children currently in the school system derive a tremendous amount of benefit in terms of the value of their home, and how they contribute in the jobs that are provided in Fairfax County or in our region, and the overall quality of the life that exists within Fairfax County. The more people who ask either themselves privately or start to ask their public officials, "Do I need to move?", your tax base is eroding right under our feet. And the way in which we can rapidly stop any tax base erosion and maintain a terrific quality of life and jobs, and draw and continue to draw wonderful economic development, is to invest in the school system. It is stewardship, and it's stewardship that pays forward for a long time. The understanding of the basics that probably close to 54% of the county's budget, their entire budget, comes to the school system is profound. It provides 72% of our entire $2.6 billion budget. We have 196 schools, 2.6 million square feet of covered capital investment in which we house 186,000 students. We have 34,000 full and part-time employees as the largest employer in the Commonwealth. We run 1,544 buses, which is about 20% larger than Greyhound. The healthcare costs that have skyrocketed this year are out of our control. So there's nothing right now that is within the control of the Board to be more fiscally sound than present a comprehensive budget that endeavors to be authentic. And I think that I can honestly say, for my first time since being on the Board, this is the most authentic budget. Is it perfect? It's never going to be perfect, because it depends on the lens through which you look. But it is time to have a true and authentic conversation about not stewardship for today and what the easy or difficult decisions are for today, but what the long-term investments in schools and in the equity of the amount of return on investment that Fairfax County Public Schools provide for our long-term economic and overall health as a county. And if we don't do that now, I don't want to be answering any more questions from my constituents or other parents and stakeholders across Fairfax County, "Do I need to move?", because I want to be able to answer that resoundingly, absolutely not. And right now, the answer is in the hands of people who have money, and that's not us.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this week, our county faced some more pretty startling and worrying economic news, which I shared with my colleagues, in that we learned that another Fortune 500 company is leaving our county. That's the second in the past few years following Exxon. And I think we all need to stand back and think not only what this means for this region, but what it means for this school system. And as someone who plans to spend my life in this county, to raise a family in Fairfax County, I'm seriously worried. And I think it reflects a lot of the worries that Ms. Schultz just articulated regarding families that are questioning whether they should stay in this county. Young families can't afford to move in. Our employees can't afford to live here. But you know what? No matter what kind of bad news like this we continue to hear, we still can say that we have one of the best school systems in the country, if not the best. But that's for now. As you've heard at this dais tonight, we cannot be more clear in our statements that this cannot last forever if we continue to be undercut the way we have over the past several years. We cannot continue to languish at the bottom of teacher salary scales in this region and expect to maintain this quality school system. To our Board of Supervisors, I would say, if you can't fund this bare-bones budget, then it's time for the members of our community to reflect and question on whether you have your priorities straight. I don't see much of a vision, to be very honest with you. I think we need a change in leadership. I think we're seeing some turnover on the Board of Supervisors. But if we can't fund this bare-bones budget in Fairfax County, then those of us who tend to be on the younger side of the demographic need to consider whether they should stay here. And it can't be more clear than that. And because I'm very scared about our future in Fairfax County, I think we all need to be scared that if these budgets continue to be underfunded as they have, we all need to be scared about our future.
Anyone else? Mr. Latif.
Thank you. Really wanted to add some student opinion to this, because I think it's a good opportunity. So obviously, I'm very glad to see that teacher and employee compensation is a top priority. Students love our teachers. They are confidants, our mentors, in some cases even our friends. And it is really sad to see that, I think, all except one of my teachers have to commute from outside Fairfax County. Some, my sophomore history teacher, I really, really like, he has to come all the way from inner Maryland. I have a, my counselor, who you all met when she came, she has to come from Arlington County. So I am proud that we are working on that, because students really do appreciate our teachers, and it's good to see that's a priority. Class size, obviously a priority. I visited my old elementary school a couple of weeks ago. My sixth-grade teacher comes up to me and says, "Harris, we have, you know, 30 kids in this class, and it's not the same when you came back, you know, back in 2009. It's gotten worse. Like, what's happening?" So I'm glad that is another priority. And obviously, fully funding our school system is absolutely critical to all of Fairfax County. Yes, I believe it was two-thirds don't have students in the public school system, but everyone has a vested interest. Families, businesses, they come to Fairfax. And my own grandparents, when they decided to settle down in Fairfax a couple decades ago, they came because of the schools. They want to raise my father in a school with a, in a district with great public schools. So I wouldn't be sitting here if Fairfax County has not maintained excellent public education. And I really do urge the Board of Supervisors, on behalf of 187,000, not all of us are voting constituents, but we will be someday, to fully fund our public schools.
Mr. Stork.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know our colleagues have spoken quite eloquently about our needs, and I think you all know that we are kind of going through this process once again, hoping for something better, but concerned that it'll be something similar to what we've experienced in the past. And I'm not here to provide any more positive spin on that, other than the fact that we know the needs are there, we know the opportunity is now, and we recognize that something must be done. This isn't one more time, and we hope for something better. This is one more time, and we must have something better. We recognize that our time is running short to maintain the quality and frankly, the innovativeness of this school system, because we've been compromised in so many ways over the last five or six years. A 2.6% increase in the budget is frankly, the inflation rate plus roughly our growth. And that alone just means a stable budget. I realize that some people would say, "Well, okay, what's wrong with that?" Well, I think the answer to that is, not so bad if we hadn't spent frankly, the last five or six years cutting our budget so dramatically. And a half a billion dollars is, in my mind, dramatic, and those are real cuts. If those things were still here today, we would view them as valuable and clearly a beneficial part of what we provide to our community, and frankly, what we need as a leader in education in the country, at least having been a leader in education in the country. So something more has to be done, and we have to fight for it. And it's that simple. We can't sit back. We can't think about it. We have to be out there upfront, talking about fully fund Fairfax, you know, meeting with people, going out in the community, and doing the education that's essential. And I'm talking to myself, as well as reiterating what I know all of you know from our many conversations. And I will continue to do that, and again, I'm expecting a different outcome, and I will work to achieve that. I was very pleased to have authorized, or actually brought forward, the motion that we made nine months ago to make teacher salary increases our priority. And I know that that was unanimous consent on that, because we all see and feel the same thing. And we know, once again, and I do mean once again, we are at step one of that process, approving a budget tonight that would at least make it clear that that is our number-one priority, and it's essential to, we think, the maintenance and further development of our school system. But we also recognize that this step one will not be enough if we don't turn it into step two, which is the funding that we need to make that happen, funding both at the state level. And we know the state in particular has fallen down, has let us all down. We're the seventh richest state in the country, seventh richest state in the country in per-capita income, and we fund our schools at about a 42nd state in the country in terms of education funding. That alone should highlight to everybody in the community, as well as remind us on the Board that it's not just a local problem, this is truly a statewide problem. On a local level, we recognize that the Board of Supervisors, our county funding, has continually and consistently helped us maintain the quality school system that we have, and frankly, helped us to become a leader. And I'm going to quote Jerry Highland, he's said this many times in many of his meetings, that over the last five or six years on the Board, this is the first time that he can remember in his 28 years of being on the Board of Supervisors, that the Board of Supervisors has not at least funded the level of student enrollment growth. And that, we clearly have not. When we are spending $1,000 less in real dollars, and we know that our spending levels are flat in terms of what we're spending in this budget, or at least in our current budget, is consistent with what we spent about in 2008, we know that we're not meeting that goal when our student population growth has grown more than 20,000 students. This time, it has to be different, and I say that with the same force and passion that I've heard so much from each of you tonight, but I know we have to work for that. There clearly are community members that we have to educate, and there clearly are public officials and leaders that are seeking election that we have to remind about what we think are the true priorities in this county. And that isn't going to be easy, but I know that's all of our responsibility. I had a meeting last evening, and I've had several meetings over the last several weeks with community associations, and those folks aren't necessarily education folks. I mean, I go to PTA meetings, I meet with those folks, but our community folks, they have obviously a broader agenda. You know, yes, they want the schools to be great, but they're also concerned about how we spend, what we spend our money on. And they said, "What can we do?" And in this particular community, they have a school that has about a 50% free and reduced meal population, very high poverty level, but it's a very separate community. You have a very wealthy portion of that community, and you have a very high turnover, you know, lower-income population. And they're deeply committed to their schools, but they're saying, "What can we do to make sure that we maintain the quality of our schools?" And I cited three things that I think are critical. One is clearly, the funding has to be there. We have to have better funding from both the state and the county. Two, we have to have preschool. We have to have these students coming into school ready, prepared to learn, and then our schools, our schools can do their job of making sure that we keep them there and we help them grow in the quality of our overall result for every child, both poorer children, if you will, the wealthier child, are achieving similar outcomes. And the third one is, we need them involved, not only involved with the community, but also involved as volunteers in our school, because particularly, we know the quality of people in Fairfax County is just amazing. We have the most educated, most astute, most engaged population that I've ever worked with, and I would especially say that's true of Mount Vernon. So I know we all have those priorities. I know we all have that passion, but we have to somehow push this through, the barriers that we've been experiencing, and try to get at least over this next hill. And I think what Dr. Garza's proposed, and what I see as adopted tonight, is in my mind, a minimum that we ought to be able to deliver on. If we can't, we need to be asking our elected leaders, "Why not?", and get them to tell us how we're going to address, you know, the inevitable decline in our school system, because that is on the path, that's the path that we're on unless something changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Velkoff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll begin by thanking Ms. Quinn and Ms. Michael for producing a budget that is transparent, understandable, and realistic. And with each budget that I've reviewed over the past four years, those qualities have improved. That's the result of what I'd like to call your relentless listening to comments from us and from people in the community. And those opinions have included gentle suggestions and harsh criticism, which you have always met with professionalism and a focus on what's best for the school system. So, thank you. Dr. Garza, I want to thank you for crafting a budget that includes a step increase and market scale adjustment for our employees, that finds savings without cutting positions, and demonstrates a sincere desire to work constructively with the Board of Supervisors. I trust that the supervisors will reciprocate by approving the 3.99% transfer. Notably, this budget heeds the guidance that the County Executive has given both Boards, that we must live within our means. Of course, this is sound management, but it is not a strategic vision. As former County Chairman Kate Henley says, "To stand still is to fall behind." And as Dr. Garza said when she joined FCPS, "We need to look beyond what is and imagine what can be." I don't see or hear anyone advancing a vision of what this county should look like in 25 years. We simply can't assume that the quality of life in this county, which is good jobs, good neighborhoods, and good schools, will continue merely by doing what we've always done. Fairfax County in 2015 is where California was in 1975. We have the opportunity to steer towards a destination of our choice or drift with the currents until we run aground. I think our Board is going to have to initiate a community-wide conversation about the future of Fairfax County. I honestly... I honestly don't know exactly what form that action should take, but I welcome your ideas and your energy to help craft a plan that the board can embrace when we approve this budget in May. We have an obligation to the next generation of parents to see that they and their children enjoy the same quality of life that we have experienced. They're counting on us. We cannot let them down.
Thank you, Mr. Velkoff. I guess I get the last word. Thank you to all of my colleagues for your reasonable and thoughtful comments. I really do appreciate that very much. And the budget itself is quite reasonable. It was brought forward to us after a great deal of conversation and collaboration, and it must be fully funded. By addressing the cost drivers brought forward by our growing enrollment and changing demographics, by giving a modest, very modest, but well-deserved 1% market scale adjustment and a step increase where eligible, by funding full-day Mondays and later high school start times, as well as giving relief to alleviate some of our larger elementary class sizes, it was well thought out. I thank you, Dr. Garza. I thank you, Susan Quinn, Kristin Michael, all of your staffs, as well as my colleagues, Ms. Reed and Ms. Smith, for your hard work to get us to this point. But this budget does not address all of our needs. And since we have had to cut to the bone, 2,100 positions cut, $435 million in reductions since 2008, that's a lot of cuts. This type of budgeting is not sustainable. And as my colleagues have said, the tipping point is here. The quality of our students' education is at stake. And we ask that the community engage, we ask that our colleagues on the Board of Supervisors, who continually state that our schools are their top priority, we ask us that you show us this by your actions. And with that, it is time to, Ms. Dr. Garza.
Just like I said earlier, I can't, I have to talk a little bit, but I'll try not to repeat everything that you all said and I'll try not to go into my long, long speech. But I think it is important, as some of you pointed out, to remind the community that the fiscal year 15 budget began on July 1st of this past summer. Almost immediately, the day after, or right after that, we began the development of the fiscal year 16 budget. So it's that many months that the board, the budget chair and vice chair, members of this full board, faculty, I mean, our staff, our finance team have been working diligently to develop this budget. So there's been countless meetings. Again, this has been a shared approach, both representing some increased costs, primarily around our priorities of employee compensation, which is sorely needed and not adequate, in my mind, but also reflects an additional $55.4 million in cuts. As Ms. Smith and others have pointed out, almost a half a billion cuts in operating costs since 2008, a third of that was just last year in fiscal year 15, the year we're, the budget we're executing right now, almost a third of that. So no one can say that we haven't dug deeply and looked everywhere for any kinds of reductions and costs or efficiencies that we could create, and it is not sustainable. As is pointed out by Mr. Velkoff and others, look across the nation, folks, pay attention, community, please pay attention. Other states can be an example of what happens when we, you know, we keep cutting and cutting and cutting and think there's not going to be any impact on the quality of our schools. It is that there will be an impact, it's, we're feeling it right now, and likely, it will have long-term effects on our schools and our communities. It broke my heart to hear the story of the family considering leaving our community. That cannot happen. And so we have to look to protecting and taking care of this wonderful asset we have today. And the decisions that will be made by this board, by the Board of Supervisors, this will be our legacy. These decisions will be our legacy. This is a very prudent budget, doesn't even come close, doesn't even come close to addressing the real needs we have as a system. In the Board of Supervisors, the county's draft strategic plan, if you look in that document, the number one written stated goal is that the schools are their number one priority. I just ask that they make that a reality in the work that they do and the decisions they have ahead. This budget that was presented to you for consideration is the first time, at least in recent history, maybe ever in the history of our school system, the closest to budget guidance we've ever been. So it's been a historic prudent budget. So I would encourage the supervisors to also do something historic and fully fund our And I would be remiss if I didn't again, thank our budget chair, vice chair, all of our board, because countless hours and energy have been put into this very difficult development of this budget, our stakeholders. And then finally, our community and our parents, thank you for your support of our schools. We need you, stand with us in helping us make these right decisions, protect our wonderful school system, and make sure that we're leaving a great legacy for this community today and into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion that's on the table is I move to adopt the FY 2016 advertised budget as detailed in the superintendent's proposed budget and is detailed in the agenda item. All those in favor? The vote is unanimous. Next, I call on Ms. Reed for a follow-up motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the division superintendent is granted authority to make necessary minor changes to comply with the intent of the school board, and is further directed to prepare fund statements reflecting all school board approved changes, together with the estimate of funds required by Fairfax County Public Schools during FY 2016 in the format prescribed in section 22.1-92 of the Code of Virginia for submission to the County Board of Supervisors. Submission of these approved documents to the County Board of Supervisors fulfills the responsibilities of the school board under Title 22, Chapter 8, Section 22.1-92 of the Code of Virginia.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? All those in favor? The vote is unanimous. I now call on Ms. Schultz for a follow-on motion.
I move to direct the superintendent to complete a review of minimum class size generated through the elementary staffing formula, and further move that the superintendent report the findings to the school board prior to April 27, 2015, which would allow for discussion at a work session scheduled prior to the presentation of the fiscal year 2016 approved budget.
Second. Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Schultz, would you like to speak on your motion?
Sure. And this just follows in concert with the number of work sessions that we've already had and the good work that Dr. Garza and the staff have done, addressing and working to lower the cap of our elementary class sizes below the state maximum mandates, but also look at the other end of the size of classrooms, which includes our small classrooms, and how we could potentially obtain additional efficiencies in both our operating budget and, as a result, as my colleague, Mr. Velkoff so aptly spoke, our capital budget for the long term. If you have two classrooms that are particularly small, either because of policies that we, as the board, have set for two-track classrooms in schools or otherwise, and that's impacting how much our capital resources are being used, then a report from staff, being able to look at that and give any additional suggestions for how we can address the smaller-sized classrooms to maximize both the equity of the teachers' time, because I am concerned about also the equity of a teacher in, for example, a fourth-grade classroom who may have 31 students versus someplace else in the division where they may have, you know, 17. So this doesn't provide for any action, it just provides for direction to staff to source some additional information, to help the board have a more intelligent conversation prior to our final budget discussion, and promises no particular outcome, but allows us to continue to be good stewards of both the fiscal resources that we have on the operating side of the House and the capital side of the House, and be continually responsive in anticipation, both of this budget cycle and future budget cycles.
Ms. McLaughlin.
I'm pleased to support this follow-on motion. As many of us have spoken in the past several years, we hear from our families in our various magisterial districts that we do have class size overcrowding and it's really created educational challenges for our teachers as well as for our students. And I really appreciate that my colleague, Ms. Schultz, conferred with the superintendent and with her staff in drafting this follow-on motion. It is a request for what I believe will be important information and is helpful to this board as we continue our work, because even though tonight, we will be presenting the proposed budget to the Board of Supervisors, our work will continue between now and the final vote in May. And so I do hope that my colleagues will see the value of getting this information that will help us as we continue to examine the challenges we face with large class sizes, particularly at the elementary school level.
Ms. Smith.
I am going to speak against the motion for a number of reasons. Number one, we do have a process to ask for information, and this is, this follow-on motion is asking for information about something. But I think one of the things that bothers me the most about the timing of getting this information and having a discussion, is that we just talked about the numbers of years that we have cut staff and we have created havoc in the schools. And when we put together this budget, that we talked about, we're not going to cut staff, we're not going to make these changes in the schools, we're going to let them hold their breath and move forward, knowing that we did have an issue with class sizes too big and we're dealing with that. But as I'm paging through the proposed budget document, and I look at page 132, and I look at the timeline for staffing in our schools. April, staffing information is given to Human Resources for staffing meetings with school principals. Planning and hiring begins for any changes in staffing or personnel. May, the cost of enrollment growth is revised to reflect the new staffing. We just had a presentation where we talked about changing when schools can hire people to May. So if we get this information at the end of April and we don't start having a discussion in May about making changes to staffing in schools where we're going to reduce people, we have created havoc. We have known for a while that class sizes have been too large. Staff has had time to be strategic, to be organized, to come up with a plan to deal with that. We don't know what the effects would be at that late date of changing staffing and removing people from schools. We don't know the impact on the total staffing of the schools. Schools are staffed by the ratios of teachers. There are too many unknowns at a time when we have thrown schools into so much turmoil that I don't believe this is the time for, to do that. I don't think it's strategic. I think if it's a discussion after this budget is done, that this board wants to have and we think we need to look at class sizes at the other time, I'm fine with that. But I cannot do this to schools. I cannot support people sitting here thinking, "Oh, my goodness, I'm teaching in a small school and we have two classes per grade level and, well, I'm not going to find out until May if this is going to keep working or not." I won't support that. So we have mechanisms for board members to ask questions? Ask a question of staff about how many small classrooms there are? But I just won't support this amendment. Thank you.
Ms. Strauss.
Thank you. I appreciate the concern for what are the actual class sizes. I remind my colleagues that on October 31, 2014, we received the spreadsheet, and it's an official public document, and it gives us the class sizes, special ed count, those students who are 504 or who are category A. It also has another column that has the special ed count, which are the students with more challenging disabilities. When you look across all of these numbers, and I think you all probably remember the October 31 document, and this is, this is the same document that would hold today. The only difference is that you would see some classes larger because more students have enrolled. This is the document. And if you take a look at how all of this goes across, yes, I think we still have one very small elementary school, and you're right, I don't want to go back in and say, you know, you're no longer going to have two classes per grade. If you take a look at the spreadsheet, you can see that, yes, high-poverty schools will have more particularly first, second, and third grade classes that may be under 20. And yes, we know that we have our non-poverty schools will have class sizes in the upper 20s and into the 30s, and we are trying to address that. But you will also see that in those schools, regardless of where they are located, when you begin to see class sizes 14, 15, 16, you will see in the right-hand column, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 students who are category B, special education students. Those youngsters, by state law, and this is something that teachers organizations have been concerned about, these are students who will spend, who are mainstreamed into that classroom. For large parts of the day, they have challenges, they need to be educated in the least restrictive environment. A principal will very often make the decision wisely, that those students who are receiving some of our most challenged students with disabilities, they need to be in classrooms that are a little smaller, because it is going to take more work from that teacher. This is the same spreadsheet, we would see the same thing if we asked for it again. There are very few changes. If we want to take a look at our staffing formulas, general education, special education, category A, category B, 504s, ESOL, free introduced meals, Title I, if you want to take a look at that, it's in the fall, after we can see the impact of what we've done with our large class sizes, which we hope we will, we will really get much closer to, Dr. Garza is working on a regulation, which you shared with us, that will probably help us to help and encourage principals to tighten up how they are staffing again, to try to not have such large class sizes, plus we're putting in $4 million. I don't support going in at this late date to take a look at what is in effect, all of these staffing formulas, try to understand and discuss this. It is too late in the budget year, I'm not going to change the formulas. We promised our teachers that we would not outright change these formulas that are based on student need. The biggest need that you can see in this are category B, special education students. I'm not going to open that one up at this late date. So certainly, if we want to look at this, the end of October, early November next year, this is when we see the spreadsheet again, then it becomes, I think, a more informed conversation. It is not an informed conversation now, it will simply create destabilization and conversations in schools where they are trying to staff schools without a confidence that they are actually going to know what they're staffing on. So I appreciate the question, it's a legitimate question, but it's the wrong time to do this. Thank you.
Ms. Evans.
Yes, thank you. I want to start out by making very clear that I do not and will not support a class-size floor. I think that that is a bad way to go for any number of reasons, including the reasons that Mrs. Strauss has laid out. I too have looked at the October 31 spreadsheet in some detail, and I would say that there are some surprises in there. It's not just high-poverty schools that have some very low class sizes. And the reasons for that may differ from school to school, it will differ from school to school, whether it's special needs children, whether it's special programs. We would have to delve deeply into finding out why in any given school, there would be a very low class size. So I will not be supporting a class-size floor. However, as complex as that... However, as complex as that gets, this isn't a proposal for a floor, it's a proposal for a request for information. And that's where I would like some clarity on this. And Madam Chair, I don't know if this question goes to the maker of the motion, or to Dr. Garza, or her staff. I'm trying to determine what would, what would we be receiving if we pass this motion? What is exactly the information that would be created if this motion passes?
Okay. I, I will ask Dr. Garza first.
Okay. Thank you. First of all, before I answer the question, I'd like to just clarify just a little bit. This is a very important discussion. I think that was evidenced by the fact that we spent a lot of time on this topic last week? Was it just last week? So I don't want to minimize how very important this topic is, it is. And I respect what Mrs. Schultz is trying to accomplish, but I, I just want to be clear. I know that Ms. Quinn and Ms. Michael helped craft the motion. We stand ready to support board members in what they want to accomplish. So I don't necessarily believe it connotes one way, one way the other supporter like thereof. Okay? I just want to be clear on this particular, on this particular motion. I think what this would have us do is provide a report to you about how many classes are, are below, I think, a number, I think you indicated it was 20, is that correct? I don't have it right in front of me. Or small, schools with small class sizes. So we, we would provide you a report, and it would be by that time, date certain. Here it is, right on, before April the 27th. So we would look at the minimum class sizes that we currently have, which is 17, that's our minimum class size, under current, our current structure, meaning we do not fund a class that's below 17. It doesn't mean they don't exist
No.
below 17.
Right.
Because remember, schools can use Title I dollars, other resources they have available to them. In some cases, it may be a function of an immersion class that where they can't quite generate the, you know, a sufficient number at a particular grade level. So, but for the pub, benefit of the public, we do not fund classes below 17.
So would you be, or did I interrupt you if you had more to say?
No. So if I understand this motion correctly, we would provide you a, a report that would demonstrate the minimum class sizes generated through the current formula. It would, it would be just essentially what you received in October, but updated.
It would be an updated report on, but that, that had all of our class sizes. And this, this is asking for a review of minimum class size generated through the elementary staffing formula. So I'm anticipating that what was wanted was something having to do with all classes below a certain level, even though it doesn't give us a number.
Which we can do that. Because remember last, last month, excuse me, last week, I provided you some numbers about how many classes we have below 17, if you remember that? So we can generate that report or something similar to that for the, for the board.
So would you anticipate if this passed that you would simply, excuse me, show us where all classes below 17 exist? And that would be the answer to the question? Well, I, I guess, I, I hear Mrs. Schultz.
It may be Mrs. Schultz that needs to answer that.
Yes, because I, I do want to get clarity on what exactly we're asking for.
Ms. Schultz?
Okay. So I do have a slight clarification. Not only would, would I think it would be helpful to have that updated, but the, the reasons behind why those class sizes are what they are, not just that it is, but, but why it is. And just for Ms. Strauss's edification, I'm, I'm very deeply aware of that spreadsheet. And as I had mentioned in our previous meeting, we have 1,026 classrooms that are at 20 or below.
Well, excuse me, if I could reclaim my time, though, I, I'd like to get the answer to my question.
Okay. All right.
And so if, if you're asking for the, the number of classes, are you asking for the number of classes under 17?
No, I'm asking for 20 and below. And
And the reasons for it?
Do, is it because it's a small school, and we need to have two of a class so that there's not one teacher who's left without a peer class? So we've split the class so that there's
I understand.
For professional development and collaborative reasons? Is it because of Title I reasons? Is it because local funds within the school have been used to make the class sizes smaller? You know, what is the, what is the basis behind why those 1,026 classrooms are 20 and below?
So with that clarification, Dr. Garza, since Mrs. Schultz is asking for specifically any classes that are 20 and below, and the reasons for each one of those, that, is that a very extensive, is that an extensive review, or is that something?
If you don't mind, let me punt this to Ms. Quinn, because as you, as you all know, I was out of town earlier this week, and so Ms. Schultz was in conversation, I believe, with Ms. Michael and Ms. Quinn. So I'd prefer that they'd answer so that we'll make sure that we have the right information.
Sure. So as Dr. Garza mentioned, the report would generate, which, how many classes we have below what's generated from the elementary staffing formula? So we were really thinking class sizes that were below 17. And some of the reasons I think Dr. Garza had already stated would be included in that report, that some of those classes are below 17 due to immersion programs. They're due to small schools. They could also be due to how we cut off the kindergarten classes, because we have a hard cap for the kindergarteners. So we could have small class sizes in those kindergartens and kindergarten classes. And then some of, for the other classes, it could be some reasons that the way the principals are grouping some of the kids in their schools. So the reasons why would be very simple. If we had to go into every class to explain, the decisions behind some of it would take some time.
I just made an executive summary.
So, so you're saying that you could do this as a very simple thing, even though we have a disconnect here between 20 and 17? So it would be nice to get clarity on that before we vote on this. And with that, I, I don't know how I'm going to vote on this, because generally speaking, I, I want school board members to get information that they feel is valuable to them, but I will listen to what others say.
I, I think the difference, Ms. Evans, if I remember correctly, classes 20 below or under 20 was about 1,000?
Correct.
Below 17 is about 70.
And, and we selected
Am I correct?
That's correct. And we selected 17 because the floor in the staffing formula is currently 17.
Because it's tied to something that's, that's a funding mechanism for us.
Are you done, Ms. Evans? All right. I'm going to, Ms. Schultz, I'll get to you, but I'm going.
Thank you. Yeah. I'm just wondering sort of why we're doing this now? How this is, or why this is a follow-on for the budget? I mean, unless we think that it's going to affect the budget, I think I, to me, it makes more sense to do it. I mean, I, I don't think it's going to affect the budget. But I mean, if, if it, if it's a budget question, then I feel like we have a process for budget questions. If it's, you know, information that we want from staff, we have a process for doing that. I'm just, I feel like we're kind of trying to draft a question at the table here. I'm not sure exactly what we're asking. So, and I, if the budget consequence is that we are going to, for fiscal year 2016, set some different floor, classrooms, I, you know, I, I think that is, I have to agree with Ms. Strauss, I think that is pretty unsettling for people who are now planning for next fall, for the opening of school. So I'm not saying that it isn't a conversation that we, you know, shouldn't start happening now. I think it should. But I, I just, I don't see it as appropriate as a budget follow-on motion. I don't know why we, somebody can explain to me why we have to do it now, you know?
Mr. Moon?
I cannot speak for Mrs. Schultz, but I can only guess. And also, my, my take on this particular motion is this. First part of the motion, which is basically seeking information, I think that can be done, even though, you know, it could be onerous on the part of a staff to, if, you know, Mrs. Schultz, as the person, as the person who is requesting for information, is asking for all the classes under the size of 20, and superintendent just told us that it would be about 1,000 classes. So it could be pretty, you know, it might entail a lot of work on the part of staff, but if board members could send in budget questions, budget questions, so that information, in my mind, could be obtained through budget questions. I guess the gist of this one is, what important part of this is, with that information, Mrs. Schultz wants to have a work session by a certain date. I think that part may be the follow-on of the approval of the advertised budget. That's how I take this motion to be. I'm not saying that I will support the motion, but that is my take of this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Anyone else want to comment before I could do my go-backs to my maker and Patty? Ms. Reed?
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. It seems to me that at this point, if we get information, there's no harm in that, and we, we can go from there. It's clearly budget-related, and it, it clearly is complicated and would have a lot of aspects that would need to be discussed. But I think that it's relevant to ask for the information. If we're talking about lowering the upper end of class sizes, it begs the question, oh, what, you know, what is the range of the class sizes? And, and clearly, it's an expenditure issue. I'm not putting any value judgment on that. But at this point, if we could get a sense for where we are, and maybe even from a policy perspective, what are some of the related policy decisions that are involved in contributing to those class size numbers? In other words, what we've just alluded to, why some of them are small. And I think, you know, and maybe it's a policy issue the board would have to grapple with, such as, is it okay or not to have one class versus two tiny classes? You know, I'm just saying that for now, if we get the information, and we'll take a look at it, maybe we identify policy discussions for a later date, maybe we don't do anything with it. But for now, if we just get the information, I just don't see any harm in that, and I clearly see that it's related to the budget. So I do support it.
I'll speak on this briefly. I think what Mr. Moon said is resonating most with me. I think the first part, I think the information, and staff has kind of clarified that they can get that to us in a budget question. And I'll let you speak to this after you, on your go-backs. But if there is an advocacy for what you want to use that information for, I think that's the time for the follow-up motion at another time. So at this point, I think what I would rather do, or what I would be voting on, I would be not voting for this, would be advocating for my colleague to ask it as a budget question, get that information to all of us, and then, and then make known to us what you would like to do with that information as you go forward. So next, I will have Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Schultz for go-backs.
I just want to point out that one of the things that was discussed at the work session last week, and while it really was a much longer work session than anticipated, is because class size is very much on the minds of this board and our superintendent, her leadership team, and the community. And so we all agreed that the merits of this proposed budget and the transfer amount, that transfer increase that we're looking for from the board supervisors is fully warranted. And to go and line item the proposed budget at this time would not be beneficial to the work, because in the end, we can't make any final decisions on this budget till we know what the full transfer amount is going to be. However, I respect that what Ms. Schultz is trying to do is actually, as Ms. Smith pointed out, do help raise awareness among our, our teaching staff and employees. We are concerned about class size. And this isn't to sound the alarm and say that suddenly we're going to start transferring teachers all over the county to different schools. But I do think that it's very reasonable, and it happens every year anyway, that our populations go up and down in various schools. Teachers get de-staffed and, and then are rehired at some of our other schools. And this information, even if this board were to decide that there might be a different way to look at staffing formulas to address class size, it's no different than what we're already doing. I'm actually surprised that some of my colleagues are saying, we, it's too late. Tell that to the, the public sector that doesn't work in our school system. Tell that to the private sector, where people can get notice of six weeks and your job's gone. You have two weeks and your job is gone. This is not about people losing jobs. This is not about destabilizing our schools. It's a request for information that does relate to the fact that it's saying, as a board, this is our proposed budget, but we want to help our community understand that we are very mindful, that our class size has been very challenging. And in these austere times since the recession, we have regrettably had to raise class size. And just simply asking for something that relates to the, the overall effect of our budget, I think is actually perhaps of value for all stakeholders, to say, we are continuing to be very careful about the budget process, and we're going to continue to get more information. And as we make our way toward May, this is helpful information to have. But to, to my colleagues who are concerned about what this might trigger, it's, it's valuable information, and it's just that. We're not making any other decisions beyond it. And I want to thank my colleague, Ms. Reed, once again. Your eloquence in capturing the merits of this motion, I really think you said it best.
Ms. Schultz?
So I want to thank Ms. McLaughlin for bringing up the notion, because that was the part that I tended to have the most difficulty with, with some of the comments of my colleagues, that a request now will yield information in the future that will then be too late to act upon. If we don't ask for it now, we'll never get it, and it will always be too late to act upon. Because we didn't ask for it before now, because we didn't have enough information to ask it, and now it's too late to ask it, because when we get the information, we'll refuse to do anything with it anyway. I can't think of something that's a worse definition of being a good steward than not seeking information, because it will arrive too late for us to then make a decision. I'm not saying we have to make any decision whatsoever with, with, with the information, but it is incumbent upon us to understand the distribution of the resources, given the atmosphere with our colleagues on the board of supervisors, with things like the Bee Pool decision by the Virginia Supreme Court, which could be greatly impacting our budget, or maybe not at all. But if we don't make the effort to acquire more information about how the resources are distributed through the division, I'm extremely concerned that it will be too late to even ask questions then. So if it's too late to even ask a question now that is significant, and I thank Mr. Moon for his, you know, secret decoder ring interpretation of, of my request. For example, the spreadsheet that Ms. Strauss happened to quote, you know, I, I think we have, we need a little bit more information from staff on the notion of what's under, under 17. Because if you sort that spreadsheet and use only zero or one special education student out of that, out of those class sizes, so you take out the threes and the fours and the fives and the sixes, there are 211 classrooms that show 17 and under. So right there, I'm confused. And then if you go up to 20, again, only having zero or one special education student amongst the 20, there are 818 classrooms that have zero or one special education student that have 20 or fewer students in the classroom. It is our fiduciary responsibility to understand the circumstances that have created the need for that. And I'm not saying we have to act on it, but we need more information in a more facile and data-meaningful manner for us to be able to understand whether or not anything has to be done. And we can't even be in the decision-making tree or framework without that information. It is wholly reasonable and prudent and necessary to pursue additional information so that we can exercise the duties of our office with stewardship and fidelity.
All right. I have two more go-backs, Ms. Hines and Mr. Moon.
I have two more go-backs, Ms. Hines and Mr. Moon.
Yeah, I would just, I, I'm not suggesting that it's not a good question. I think it is. And I think it might also be something where we would agree that we want to have a work session on, to really dig into class sizes, because, you know, there are a lot of questions about that. But I think this is sort of a precedent-setting request, that a budget question be asked as a follow-on motion to our approving the budget. I asked budget questions back in December. We've had budget questions come from other board members, from Board of Supervisors members. That's how we do it. And, you know, there's a reason for that. I think you can take your time to craft a question as a budget question sent to staff. They can take their time to ask you questions, and you can take the time to get the kind of answer that you want, and you can share the answer with the world and the school board. And we have a way of requesting work sessions. It's our forum. You bring an idea to the forum, and you get a work session. So I guess I just don't think that this is the right way to ask this, and that might seem like insight baseball, or that I'm being picky. But when you do it as a follow-on motion to the budget, I think it suggests to the community that this is the most important budget question that we have, and we have many budget questions. And I also, so the question then becomes, well, next year, when I have budget questions, am I going to just wait and do them as follow-on motions to the budget? And that's how I feel like your, this request is a little bit behind, because, you know, a lot of budget questions came early, weeks before tonight, when we had to vote on this, so that we were able to do some of our thinking and deciding and discussions before now, so that we could propose amendments now. But I'm not, you know, again, I, what I would, I'm not going to support this, and I would just suggest that my colleague, Mrs. Schultz, I think you're asking for very important information, but I would just ask you to do it as a budget question. We will all be copied on it. We'll all get the answer. And then if you think it's important for us to have a work session, bring that to a forum. I'll be happy to hear the advocacy, and I might agree with you.
Mr. Moon, followed by Ms. Strauss, and then Ms. McLaughlin again.
I just want to say that I fully agree with Ms. Hines on this motion, that, in asmuch as I would like to support Mrs. Shorsh seeking information, there's a way to do it. So, you know, go that way. But if her intent is to pin down a work session topic prior to a certain time, at this point in time, right now, that's where I cannot go. I'll wait and see, because we are always bold, is constrained by the amount of time we can devote. So I prefer to wait until after we get the information and make that decision whether to schedule a work session to discuss any topic. So I would like to suggest to Mrs. Shorsh, if he could, if you're, I'm not, I'm not going to support your motion as crafted, but if your motion fails, I hope that you submit a budget, you know, budget question, and depending upon the responses we get from the staff, you know, if you feel, if any board members feel that, that should be brought back for the forum discussion, schedule a work session. I think that is the way it should go.
Ms. Strauss.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I've just resent to you all this spreadsheet, and I do agree, as a budget question, I think this makes a lot more sense, and certainly it is important that school board members get whatever information that they need. And I would never oppose that. So I have sent you the entire spreadsheet. It goes classroom by classroom by teacher name for every school, and it is, it gives you a great deal of information. And yes, you can do a search simply by number, but this will help to give you basically what the lay of the land is right now. Again, I would urge people, and Ms. Schultz, to ask this as a budget question. We can continue to talk about it, but I do not support it as a follow-on motion to the budget at this time. And I encourage you to take a look at the spreadsheet, because it is very interesting, and it certainly is worthy of a discussion. Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin.
I want to thank Ms. Hines, because I think she really helped maybe frame where this is all going. The merits of Ms. Schultz's motion is that this board did not, and rightfully so, want to dig into the budget, the proposed budget this time, and start picking apart line item by line item, because we don't know what the full transfer amount's going to be. But by putting this follow-on motion, what it does indicate to the public is how many on the board share the concern of our community of the real fact that we've got large class sizes. And the opportunity here is for as many board members as possible to support the follow-on motion and communicate to our public, "We understand this budget doesn't put us where we want to be with class size. We do want to get more information. We have a responsibility to deliberate between now and when we get the transfer, and then when we finally vote." It's a request for information, but what it allows is, instead of it being a normal budget question, it allows every single one of us in public, not just to the Board of Supervisors, but to everyone who's expressed a concern about class size, to say, "We jointly share your concern and your awareness of the issue, and so we're voting in support of this information to help this board have that available to us." Yes, Ms. Schultz could submit this as an individual budget question, and I don't think it's because Ms. Schultz couldn't get her game together on it. I think it's just, she said at the work session, "I respect everyone's desire not to pick apart a budget at this point in time." But I do think it's important we make a statement that there are however many of us that want to communicate to the public, that we realize our work is not done on this, and we'll keep working on it and studying this issue while we await the transfer amount. So I do hope people understand, you, quite frankly, will benefit if you believe this is important information, to have the opportunity to support the follow-on motion, and that's why I will gladly do so.
Madam Chairman, point of order?
Go ahead, Mr. McElveen.
Since there has been a document that has been shared by email, I wanted to, I had hoped that we would be able to post it up here, but it's my understanding that it actually contains some personally identifiable information that we really don't want to just throw up there on the screen. But I would ask my colleagues to just, please be mindful of how we share information in the middle of meetings.
I believe it's a public document.
It is. We're just not able to, no, not yet. I have Ms. Evans, followed by Mr. McElveen.
Just had a couple more questions. Do we have scheduled yet a work session on class size? This is something we're going to be discussing soon, are we not? I'm sorry.
We had a work session scheduled on last Thursday, and as I indicated, I felt like we needed some time for us to implement these many, many new changes that we're recommending.
Right.
So there weren't, there was not another one scheduled throughout these next few months. So that would have to go to the chair and vice chair to consider how we would, how we would build that in. So our work session on class size was last Thursday, and that was the only one that was scheduled, I think, through the remainder of the year.
Correct.
Is your, is your intention to have one in the next month or two? Is that?
That was not my intent at this time, no.
It's not?
No, it was not.
So when are we going to be discussing class size? And the, and the new, I mean, I know we had, we discussed it last week.
Correct.
Right. But is there nothing?
Typically, after we do that, we don't have one for several weeks, or, you know, there's a great deal of advocacy brought forward through the forum process and then brought to us. So, you know, there isn't anything scheduled right now.
I think with something as significant as this, I would hope we would have a work session coming up before this was implemented. I guess I had assumed that we would be doing that.
I'm sorry, I'm not certain of your question.
Because we've received something from the superintendent about class-size changes.
Correct.
And we had a discussion on it. Is that the end of our discussion?
No, not at this point. Dr. Garza, you can speak to this.
Okay, folks. I think we're getting lost kind of in the weeds, and I'm certainly, we're very happy to prepare and produce any report that this school board needs at any time, whether it be to support the budget adoption, or whether it be just to help with governance and policy questions. What we had talked about last week were the changes that we were recommending, as it, or is it related to the budget, because we have additional dollars associated in the budget, and that spoke to how we intended to spend that money. And that was provide additional teachers to our schools based upon those maximum class sizes we talked about last Thursday. Okay. What we had talked about in full, in terms of a full workshop or work session, was we felt like better after the start of this next school year, when we could really speak to how that translated into class sizes and staffing to our schools. We're changing a lot, as you remember. And one important change that I don't want to be missed by this community and to those who might be listening, is we are very cognizant of the fact that we're, we must be effective stewards of the taxpayer dollars. So in fact, one of the changes, you remember, that we discussed in terms of policy changes and just regulation, is that within the first 10 days of school, we haven't been doing this, this is something new, within the first 10 days of school, should a school not meet their enrollment projections, we will pull teachers out of a school and move them to places where we need them. That has not been the practice in recent past, and that will help reduce the number of small class sizes we have, just because that would be a new, new practice. So we're very well aware that we need to move around those, those resources where we need them the most and where our greatest needs are. I think the cap on class size was important, but I think these other components of the process were also important as well. But we would not be able to report on those in terms of impact and how that translated until after we start the school year.
All right, and that's a topic for another day. Thank you.
All right. I have Mr. McElveen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I have two frustrations. The first frustration is that we have spent the past 45 minutes discussing this, significantly more time than we spent on the actual $2.6 billion budget. The second frustration being that I think all of the above solutions are incorrect. I think when you're asking for this amount of extensive information, it is not advisable to submit it as a budget question. I think the correct way is to bring it to a forum. That's what we were taught when we became board members, that when you're requesting a report, it goes through the forum. The irony in that is that we canceled tonight's forum. But I do not think this is the correct way to move either way. I don't know if there's a solution now, but at this point, I'm ready to vote no and move on.
Ms. Schultz, last go back.
Okay, so glad that Dr. Garza reminded us that the implication that somehow this is late is, frankly, it's a little bit offensive, because I'm going to remind my colleagues that I have personally brought this issue at least three separate times and gave prior advance warning and notice that I intended to have a budget amendment or some nature of a motion. And I was asked specifically not to craft a budget amendment, because we didn't want to impugn our budget and let our budget process go. I could not bring anything until Dr. Garza presented her budget work session to us on class size last week. And if you recall, we kept being told, "The information's forthcoming, the information's forthcoming. Hold off on, on anything around the budget or digging into budget line items around class size, because something is coming." So we were asked, as a board, to hold off until we received that information, but there was plenty of discussion at work sessions, at forums, and at the budget work session around this topic. So the fact that we did not need to spend 45 minutes, I completely agree with Mr. McElveen. This is budget-related, because the budget presentation that we had last week with the class-size caps being brought down is budget-implicating. Therefore, it is just as reasonable to ask for additional information that may be budget-implicating at the other end of the seesaw. So this all tied together, I could not ask a question before information was presented, and in anticipation of that information being presented, I gave very clear notice to my colleagues that the concern that I'm hearing from my constituency around high classroom sizes is compounded by the fact that we have a huge number of classrooms in our division that are at 20 and under, and it is absolutely conforming to a budget question to ask that information had we had it. But we didn't have it, therefore, it necessitated one of two things. Either a budget amendment, which, in deference to my colleagues, I elected not to do, I listened to my colleagues and found the more reasonable path, which was a follow-on motion. So that which was deemed reasonable and which was requested is now, all of a sudden, somehow late and not reasonable. And that's, that, you want to talk about frustrating, that's a very intriguing analysis for something that is totally related to a budget implication, and trying to look forward and gain us additional information, because things may not be so rosy for us on April 27th.
Mr. Stork.
I just had something I needed to understand. In the motion itself, it uses the word "to complete a review of the minimum class size generated." To me, that would constitute, imply something more significant than what, just responding to a question. But what I heard tonight, Dr. Garza was at the budget staff, where the staff was committed to responding to this, the question really that's being asked, which is really to identify those schools. Am I correct in that understanding? So regardless of the outcome of this vote, the information's going to be provided too. All right, thank you very much.
All right. With that, I will once again read the motion. I move to direct the superintendent to complete a review of the minimum class size generated through the elementary staffing formula. Further move that the superintendent report the findings to the school board prior to April 27, 2015, which would allow for a discussion at a work session scheduled prior to the presentation of the FY 2016 approved budget. All those in favor? Reed, McLaughlin, Evans, and Schultz opposed. Moon, McElveen, Hines, Smith, Deronette, Kofax, Velkoff, Stork, and Strauss, the motion fails. Next agenda item is, this is the portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time will make several motions to confirm the recommended action. Tonight, I believe it's only one motion, and I call on Ms. Strauss for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who possessed and used an illegal drug at school, and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Schultz. All those in favor? The vote is unanimous. Next, we will move on to our consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 5.01, approve the minutes of the January 22, 2015 regular school board meeting. 5.02, authorize the division superintendent or her designee to sign all documents associated with the sale of the house on Lot 7004 Springville Court in Springfield, Virginia of Spring Village Estates. 5.03, confirm the membership and executive board of the Title I District Advisory Council as detailed in the agenda item. 5.04, confirm the elected members of the Fairfax County Public Schools Early Head Start Family and Early Childhood Education Program Head Start Policy Committee as detailed in the agenda item. 5.05, award a contract for the Braddock Elementary School Roof Replacement Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, RD Bean Incorporated, in the amount of $310,800, and a contract for the Cedar Lane School Roof Replacement Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, RD Bean Incorporated, in the the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, RD Bean Incorporated, in the amount of $344,140. And authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contracts on behalf of the school board. 5.06, appoint individuals to serve on the committees as detailed in the agenda item. Are there any objections to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objections, the consent agenda is approved. Next, we have new business. And the following items are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a later meeting. 6.01, approve the proposed local academic assessment plan as an option to certify highly-qualified paraprofessionals within FCPS under Section 1119 of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act as detailed in the agenda item. 6.02, award contracts for Hayfield Secondary School and Twain Middle School Roof Replacement Projects to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contracts on behalf of the school board. And 6.03, approve the recommended revisions to the Facilities Planning Advisory Council Charter as detailed in the agenda item, and update the Strategic Governance Manual accordingly. Next, Superintendent Matters. Dr. Garza. Oh, there you are, I didn't even see, you're, you're coming.
So sorry. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. The 10th Annual FCPS Special Education Conference, Parents Plus Educators Plus Students Equals Success, is scheduled for 8:00 AM on Saturday, March 7, at Hayfield Secondary School. This is a very popular conference, and it's designed for our parents and educators of students who receive special education services or who have learning challenges or special needs. This is always a highlight of our year. We're always very proud of the great kind of collaboration and opportunity to learn together. The, the conference will feature NIH scientist Bruce Wexler, MD is the keynote speaker. He will share the science behind his work to help improve executive functioning skills in children. Parents and educators can choose from more than 46 different workshops. We hope to see you there. Mary Ann Rosbach, as teacher at Sunrise Valley Elementary School, has been named the 2015 William C. Lowry Mathematics Educator of the Year for the elementary school level by the Virginia Council of Teachers of Mathematics. Rosbach, who serves as a sixth grade teacher and a mathly teacher at Sunrise Valley. She is credited with developing, implementing the South Lakes High School Math Institute to provide staff development and interest school math planning collaboration for our colleagues. We congratulate Mary Ann Rosbach for her, this wonderful award. Also, I thought was fascinating, many of you may have seen in the Washington Post, they reported yesterday that one of our graduates won the million-dollar Doritos Super Bowl ad contest. If you haven't seen it, you must watch it. You can see it on YouTube, and it's, it's really creative. Scott Zabilski, graduate of Thomas Jefferson High School, created the ad in which the main character will do just about anything obnoxious to keep the middle seat next to him free on the airplane. I know we all have thought of some of the things that he does. When he sees an attractive woman coming, coming down the aisle, he entices her with a bag of Doritos. But as she moves closer down the aisle, she has an adorable but grumpy little baby accompanying her. It all ends up with mom asleep and the guy feeding the baby Doritos. And the child, the baby, is actually his own child. So it's a fascinating story. He also talks about how he would use the million dollars if he won it, and he talks about how much it would help his family. And it's a really inspiring, wonderful story. And so we're very proud of Scott, and we congratulate him on that win. That's wonderful. So, thank you, Madam Chair. That completes my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Garza. Next on the agenda is board reports, and I will start with Mr. Moon for a report on the January 28 Audit Committee meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Audit Committee met Wednesday, January 28, and discussed the status of the current audit work, and review three business process honorable audit reports and a status update of the FCPS Medicaid reimbursement program. The Audit Committee further discussed a proposed work framework for the remainder of the fiscal year 2015, the process for developing the fiscal year 2016 internal audit work, and also the process for the delivery of program evaluation report to the audit, to the Audit Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Next, Ms. Reed for the Budget Committee. We report on January 29.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had a public hearing on the budget on January 29. We had a total of 16 speakers who attended. And then following that, we had a work session. We entertained questions on Dr. Garza's proposed budget. We talked about the budget schedule, budget question process, and the draft proposal to address large class sizes.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. And Ms. Evans, governance meeting that was held on February 2.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At that Governance Committee meeting, we finalized plans for our retreat later this month. And we did ask to see the survey that's going to be going out to all board members and LT members about the strategic plan and our, and asking us about our top priorities for measurements. Board members should expect to see that very soon. We also discussed leadership succession and developed a recommended timeline and a possible limit on the number of times any school board member may serve as chair or vice chair. We, I have drafted something for the committee, which we will look at again in March, and then we will bring our recommendations to the full board at our March work session.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. And next, we'll go to Board Matters, and I'm going to change it up. I'm going to start with Ms. Schultz today.
Just notably, on Saturday at Pohic Regional Library, I have community office hours, and I'm looking forward to a number of Springfield District residents, whether you have children in the public school system or not, to please come and see me at Pohic Library from 10:00 to 12:00. You don't need to have an appointment. You can just come, and it'll be advertised as one of the conference rooms at the, at the Pohic Library. So I look forward to seeing the Springfield residents there.
Ms. Evans.
Thank you. I enjoyed meeting with the Stewart High School PTSA recently to discuss a number of facilities and instructional issues. I was joined there by Regional Assistant Superintendent Fabio Zuluaga, Region 2 Executive Principal Jay Pearson, and appreciated all the people who came out to voice their, their, their issues and, and give us their thoughts. I was honored to attend a lunch event hosted by the Vietnamese-American community celebrating the introduction of the Vietnamese language program at Falls Church High School next fall. And I particularly appreciate that FCPS World Language Specialist Christina O was there to answer questions about how the language program will be implemented. We had a very good exchange of information, as well as the celebration of the partnership that led to the first introduction of Vietnamese language and, language into our public schools. This Saturday, I will be attending a town hall meeting hosted by Delegate Kay Corey with State Senators Dick Sazla and Dave Marsden there as well. This will be from 10:00 to 12:30 PM at Sleepy Hollow Elementary School, and I hope as many members of the public can attend that town hall meeting to learn more about actions taking place in the General Assembly. The Mason District Council is hosting a forum on the state of the schools in Mason District. This will be held at 7:00 PM Tuesday, February 10, at Glasgow Middle School. I will be there with an all-star cast, including Dr. Garza, School Board Chair Tammy Daranak Kofax, Assistant Superintendent Jeff Plattenberg, Dr. Zuluaga, and other experts from the school system to discuss many school issues. And I do hope that, that many Mason District residents will join us there on Tuesday night. Lastly, I am very much looking forward to Dr. Garza's next listening tour, this one for Region 2. That's being held at 6:30 on Tuesday, February 17, at Falls Church High School. I hope many Region 2 parents, students, and teachers will be able to turn out for that important event. So we've got a lot of, a lot of busy times here in Region 2 and Mason District.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss.
Last weekend, the NAACP held their yearly open house, at which time their new officers were sworn in by Sharon Bulwood, which is very nice. And it's, it's always a wonderful opportunity to see old friends, catch up, and to hear of the many wonderful projects that the NAACP undertakes, particularly those that are on behalf of our students and our families. So many of us were there, and we always appreciate that invitation. Our Safe Community Coalition this year has, among its many projects, sponsored an ethics day for sixth graders, and I was there on Monday. We had a very large turnout at Spring Hill Elementary School and Franklin Sherman. Excellent, excellent opportunity to engage our sixth graders in ethical decision-making, moral decision-making. The kids were very thoughtful. Special thanks to the Safe Community Coalition, and they will be having many, many sessions. They will cover all of the public and private schools in the McLean area. Excellent undertaking. And our Safe Community Coalition in the Layland-McLean area, we will be celebrating our 20th birthday next fall. And it was one of the best things I think we've done. I also want to congratulate Cooper Middle School, another quarterly project, interdepartmental project. This one was a mock trial, an environmental mock trial under the state of Industries Clean Water Act and Nuisance Law. This is again, an excellent example of their AAP team, cross-department, doing project-based learning. Very, very powerful. And as you know, Cooper is, is getting itself ready to be designated a full AAP center when that are deemed ready. This is an amazing project. I believe they now have more AAP certified teachers at Cooper than any other middle school or AAP center in the county. So when the time is ready, I think they will be ready. They are implementing a very powerful and popular program. Thank you.
Mr. Stork.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, I wanted to thank my colleagues for attending, many of my colleagues for attending with me, the 28th Annual Mount Vernon District Town Meeting hosted by Jerry Highland. And in particular, I thank Ms. Daranak Kofax for her kind words, and really, the general comments that she made about how we are all together in this, and we need us all if we're going to truly make this work for our students. So thank you, Ms. Daranak Kofax. And I also want to thank Mr. McElveen, Mr. Moon, Mr. Velkoff for their attendance. And as always, you all bring a lot. When they see that many board members in attendance, they know that it's important, and they know that they're going to be heard. So it is very important to me as well, and I deeply appreciate your, your engagement and your attendance. Thank you. On the third, which is just a couple days ago, the West Potomac High School had an arts extravaganza. It was just an amazing, I've never been there before. I, it was just, it's, you walk in, and they have all these different kind of art activities, from, from silk screening to drawing to music to up on the stage. They had singing and dancing, and, and it just was a really an amalgamation of different kinds of events that you could move one, one after the other as a, as a participant, or as a student, or as somebody who's just curious. So it was just incredibly well-done. It was their second annual, and I was, I'm sorry I missed the first one, because this one was, was wonderful. So if you have a chance in the future, it's just a very different kind of event, and I want to encourage everybody to, to come. And then last evening, Mount Vernon High School had their science fair, and also very well-done, very well-attended. And I also met with the Mount Vernon Civic Association, and, and they were equally involved and committed to our community and shared some of the concerns I actually had referenced earlier in our conversation this evening. Bryant High School has their mid-year graduation on the 11th. That's just next week. And anybody who's ever been to a graduation at Bryant knows it is truly a special, extraordinary event. There are student speakers who talk about how they got to where they are and, and the challenges that they overcame. And truly, you can see what it means to, to get an education for some of these kids. It truly has been a, just almost a Herculean struggle to get to where they are, but they, it was so important then that they did it. And I greatly appreciate that. On the 12th, which is a week from now, is probably the most important day of the year. And I, I'll ask my school members if they know what that important day is. Could it be? Yes, it could. Abraham Lincoln's birthday. See, I was going to help you out a little bit here. Now, I could ask the fifth graders, and they would probably be able to tell me that. So maybe, I'm not sure what that says, but, but anyways, we have a great, I have a great group of people I'm meeting with at Hollins Meadows, Wayne Wood, I'm going to Mount Vernon Woods, as well as Woodlawn. So, and meeting with the kids and talking about my hero is, is always a lot of fun. On the Friday, that this, we have the 60th anniversary of Gunston Elementary School, 60 years, and it's one of our really more unique schools. It's on, it's really on a rural part of the county, and, and it's still on septic and kind of its own systems there. And it makes it a little bit harder, but they, they have a great community, a very engaged community. So I'm looking forward to attending and celebrating with them. And sadly enough, maybe I was, also went to the 50th anniversary when we celebrated. So I'm not sure what that says about me, but it is something I've enjoyed. The 14th, I have my office hours. Saturday, I have two sets, one in the morning at, at Lorton Library from 10:00 to 12:00, and the afternoon from 12:30 to 2:30 at Sherwood Hall Library. Everybody's always welcome to attend, please do so. And Hollins Meadows has their international fair that same day, and people are encouraged to attend. And then finally, there's the parade on Monday, and I look forward to being there and waving at many folks. If you have a chance, the Alexandria, the President's Day Parade, they call it the George Washington Day Parade, but you know, some of us think it's broader than that. But, but you're welcome to attend, along with all the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts and Confederate soldiers and, and the folks who drive those little carts and everything else. So it's, it's a lot of fun. So, thank you all very much.
Ms. McLachlan, right on time.
Very briefly, I just wanted to say that I really very much enjoyed meeting with the Lake Braddock Student Leadership Class along with Ms. Schultz. They were, once again, just a very engaged group of students in sharing with us what their educational experiences, what are the stressors that they are experiencing in school. And Ms. Schultz and I are getting that data from their surveys collected, so that we can share with all of you what they've told us so far. But each class has been about 50 to 60 students, so it's really been great to see how engaged they are and, and wanting to share their views. I also want to compliment the Just Ask Virginia advocacy group and the evening presentation that they gave along with Fairfax County Police, talking about human trafficking. And, you know, several of our colleagues were there as well. But I really commend the organization that began out of West Springfield and their efforts to highlight a very real issue that not only is affecting us nationally, but here in Fairfax County. And with that, I look forward to going to actually celebrate my grandmother's 90th birthday celebration, which is quite a, a, an achievement at this day and age. And so I just wanted to give a shout out to Mary Ann Gormastic. You were one of the women working on the Brooklyn Navy Yards in World War II. You are an inspiration, and I look forward to celebrating with you.
Very nice. Mr. Velkoff.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Ms. Smith.
Ms. Hines.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of things. This past weekend, I participated in the National School Boards Association's Federal Advocacy Institute. That's basically the opportunity that school board members from across the country have to advocate and lobby on Capitol Hill. And I worked with the Virginia School Boards Association delegation that was there, and we met with some of our representatives. And I want to thank our two senators for meeting with the whole group on Monday evening. It looks like we may have some movement on some federal, possibly some federal education legislation. Stay tuned. But I thought that the Virginia School Boards Association delegation did a good job of advocating for our schools. Also wanted to thank McNair Elementary School PTA for having me last night to their meeting. And just, you know, McNair is one of those schools that has significant class size issues. And I, you know, was able to talk to them with a little bit of hope about next year. But I will be back actually out in March. I understand that some facility staff will come to talk about their, out there facilities issues. They are crowded within classrooms, and they're spilling out of the building as well. So I'll be back. It's a great community out there. I was happy to see everybody. Just one more thing, this Saturday at 9:00 at the American Legion Hall in Vienna, Senator Chat Peterson, State Senator Chat Peterson and State Delegate Mark Keem will host a, an informational meeting for anyone who's interested to get an update on what's going on in Richmond. I will be there and listening for all the good things that they're doing for public schools.
Mr. McElveen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I enjoyed joining my colleagues, Mr. Velkoff and Ms. Daranak Kofax, in Richmond for the Virginia School Board Association Capitol Conference. It's always a competition to figure out which piece It's always a competition to figure out which piece of legislation is the stupidest. And we actually, I think, succeeded in finding one, which I shared with my colleagues, which is that the ADF grading scale, which has been proposed to grade our schools, has now been transformed into a piece of legislation that would turn it into a star scale. So your schools would be ranked by stars, from one being the lowest scoring school to five being the highest scoring school. So we never know if that might pass, so we might have to get our little sticky stars ready for next year. But it was an enjoyable time. I think we did learn quite a great deal and look forward to sharing that with all of you. And finally, we do have Valentine's Day coming up, and it's always important to say how much we love each other, and I extend that to all of my colleagues.
Aww. Too cute.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. Can I, I forgot one additional thing. Not only do I have a community office hours this Saturday, next Thursday, I'm hosting the first ever annual, hopefully annual, Teacher Town Hall at West Springfield High School at 7:00 p.m. And a kit message has gone out, and spread the word.
Ms. Reed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too want to congratulate Mary Ann Rosback from Sunrise Valley Elementary School. My daughter had her for science when she was at Sunrise Valley, and she's now 23 years old, and she still talks about her. So she is that special of a person, and I'm very excited to congratulate Mary Ann on Math Educator of the Year. Attending the Mountain View graduation next Tuesday, I love to attend that, similar to the Bryant graduation. It's really an opportunity for us to understand that our students come from far and wide, and they all have their stories. But to see them be successful and walk across that stage, knowing that they have overcome some significant obstacles, is so inspirational. Also wanted to mention that there is a STEM symposium coming up on March 7 at the NiSmith School in Herndon. Will be participating, and lots of other industry students, academia, so check it out if you're interested in the STEM field. And last but not least, colleagues, Mrs. Schultz and I are meeting managers next Monday, so make sure that you're prepared. And we're going to be counting not just the amount of time you speak, but the number of words you use. I'm teasing. I'm teasing. All right.
I was going to say, will it take to have the grade level that we're speaking at as well?
But do come prepared, and please submit questions in advance that you have to staff. Thank you.
Mrs. Reed, I fully support your effort to count the number of words board members speak. You know, board members generally know that I generally do not talk about things I have done as a board member. But I just want to mention, among other things, I just want to mention one thing. A couple of nights ago, I was here at the Luther Jackson Middle School at an event sponsored by Fairfax County Association for Gifted. They had a panel discussion on twice-exceptional learners. You know, a couple of our staff members, along with an expert in behavioral pediatrics, was a fascinating discussion, very educational as a board member. So in the future, if and when there is another session like that, and I would like to encourage board members to come in, listen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I've attended that in the past, and it is quite eye-opening. Also, I, as Mr. McElveen said, with Mr. Velkoff, I attended the SBA Capitol Conference, and it is always enlightening. And again, if anyone has questions, we will be happy to share with you the information we've learned. And we are going to get an update from Mr. Malloy soon. We will have that. Also, I continue my school visits, and this week I visit Groveton Elementary and Sandburg Middle School. I also had the pleasure of driving with my colleague, Ms. Schultz, through her district to learn a little bit more about her district. And in my quest to meet with all the board supervisor members during my time as chair, I had the pleasure of meeting with Mr. Harity, and that was appreciated, and we had a great meeting. Also, I was happy to attend the town hall meeting. Mr. Stork, you know why I was mad at you with that one? Just for a bit? Oh, he's not here. He can't even roll my eyes. Here's roll his eyes at me. But, just kidding. But, and also the same day, I had the pleasure of attending the NAACP Open House. Today, I had a wonderful meeting with the Fairfax County Retired Teachers Association, who are so supportive of our schools and our students and understand our budget, our woes. And they actually, they were telling me just earlier this week, they chartered a bus and they went down to Richmond to lobby. So it's great seeing them still so energized and so involved and advocating for us. We really appreciate that very much. And with that, I thank you, and this meeting is adjourned.